I'd like to welcome you all to the Tuesday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. We're so glad to have so many people with us today, and I know many are watching from home. I'd like to welcome you all. At this time, I'd like to remind you to turn off your cell phones. This morning, we would like to welcome our very own Sheriff Tracy Murphy. He is going to lead us in our invocation, and our pledges were led by Kevin Carr, our Director of Technology Services. If you'll please stand.
Will you pray with me, please? Our gracious heavenly Father, Lord, first of all, we come to you just thankful, Father, thankful for another day, another opportunity, another opportunity at life, a gift from you that we're so thankful for, Lord. Father, we're thankful for allowing us to live in a country that we can come together and that we choose our leaders and we're free to come together and discuss things and without fear of retribution from our government. Father, thank you for allowing us to live in the greatest state in this union, Father. God, I ask your blessings on everyone here. I ask the blessings on their families, Father. And God, as we come to the Easter season, God, the greatest gift ever given to us was your son. And thank you for allowing him to die for me and for everyone in this room, Father, and for three days later, God, defeating death. It's been overcome, God, and our sins are paid for, Father, and it's a debt we could never repay and one you would never ask us to repay. Thank you for the blessings of this life you've given us. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our great U.S. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And to Texas, honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Well, thank you, Sheriff, and thank you, Kevin. Teresa, we do not have anyone registered for public input for items not listed on the agenda. So we have several guests with us today, and so we'll go ahead and proceed to our resolutions, awards, and presentations. And we'll start with item three A, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and any appropriate action. We have several individuals from several of our groups here that deal with child abuse from the CPS Board and CASA and the CAC and Community Partners in Cumberland. If y'all would make your way forward here, that'd be great. And if you would like to introduce yourself, any representatives would like to introduce yourself and your agency or what you do, we would love to hear from you. We just had a breakfast in the next room, and it was good to see everybody. And as all these individuals are working together to tackle the tough issue of child abuse. So if anyone wants to, any representatives want to say hi, you're welcome to. We would love to hear from you. Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Ruthie Cherry. I'm with Our Community, Our Kids. We're a nonprofit that is the contractor that took over conservatorship services overseeing kids in foster care from the state just one year ago. I'm very proud to report that eighty-seven percent of the staff that were working, providing those services to families on the state side came with us to Our Community, Our Kids, and ninety percent of their staff are still with us. The staff has done a phenomenal job keeping kids with family. We have fifty percent of kids in care placed with family members, and we have decreased the number of kids that are in permanent managing conservatorship, which means we're really keeping foster care as it's intended, as a last resort in a very short term as we help families heal and become reunified or move kids to permanency. And so we just want to say thank you. We appreciate all your support. Our families and our staff need your continued support, and we appreciate that from all the community stakeholders as well as this Commissioners' Court. So thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for what y'all do.
Hi, I'm Karen Lowry. I'm a Program Director for Child Protective Investigation. We do have some of our staff here also with our investigations team. And what we do is my staff are the frontline. So when there is a report made to our hotline, our staff are the first responders that go out. Oftentimes, they don't know what they're walking into until they get there, and they work tirelessly for this job. Often, it takes away from their own family, but I am really proud to have the team that I have. They really care about the children and families in our county. And I'm also thankful for our community partners because with them, it really takes a team to keep our children safe here. And also for all of y'all's support throughout the years. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. My name is Lauren Romero. I'm a Denton County employee, and I proudly serve on the Board of Directors for CASA of Denton County. CASA's mission is to speak up for children who've experienced abuse and neglect and to ensure that they have the support and the stability they need to heal and thrive. Last year alone, our dedicated volunteer advocates served five hundred and seventy-seven children across Denton County. Collectively, they've provided over twenty thousand hours of personalized advocacy, covering everything from education and healthcare to legal needs. CASA volunteers submitted written reports and gave testimonies for more than thirteen hundred court hearings, with their informed recommendations accepted more than ninety percent of the time by judges and juries. If there is one area that we need your help, it's volunteer recruitment. We've launched Project One Hundred, a campaign to recruit one hundred new advocates to support children right here in Denton County. These volunteers come from all walks of life, people who care deeply and are ready to show up for a child in foster care. We ask for your help spreading the word. Please share this opportunity with your networks, your neighbors, and your friends. If they want more information, they can find that at casadenton.org. With your support, we can ensure that every child who needs an advocate has one. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Yes, Debbie. Thank you. Yes. Great. Thank you. Good to see you. Okay, good. Thank you, Deve.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm John Perry, President of Community Partners of Denton County. Our primary purpose is to serve kids who are in transition as they are removed from homes into the CPS system. We provide emergency cares all the way from Pampers to a bed to sleep in, sometimes even car seat to transport kids. Oftentimes, when they are removed from a house, the only thing they have is what they have on their backs. So until they can get to foster care, we provide those necessary supplies until they can get on their feet. Where we need most support now is intakes are up, donations are down. As Joe said this morning in our breakfast, everybody wants money. But the biggest need we have in Denton County right now are beds. Me personally, put together probably forty beds since the beginning of this fiscal year. So bed is a great need. We can always use, of course, Pampers, but most of these things we provide through the donations that we receive. But we've actually written grants to help us get more beds because of the number of intakes that we're in. We just didn't budget for these many beds, and we don't know when we're going to get the call, right? So when the recall happens, we do what we can to make sure that we get it out to the parents. So we want to thank the court for the work that you do and the support that you provided for us. And as I also said this morning, we're in for the long haul, and we'll do what we need to do as long as we need to do it. And we obviously can't do it without your support. So we appreciate your support and support from the community to continue to serve the kids of Denton County.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Courtney Banatoski. I am the CEO of Cumberland Youth and Family Services. We are a hundred and twenty-year-old nonprofit here in Denton. Our whole mission is to create safe places to call home for kids in the foster care system, for young adults aging out of the foster care system, and for vulnerable single-parent families. And we certainly can't do this work alone. We're very grateful to the court and everybody in this room who supports our work. Last year, we served two hundred and sixty-two individuals. We provided more than eighteen thousand days of care for kids in the foster care system, young adults, and single-parent families. And we provided more than two thousand hours of trauma-informed counseling and therapeutic services for folks in the child welfare system. So I would encourage everybody in this room to figure out how they can find a way to plug in to the work that we all collectively do. If you can't adopt, foster; if you can't foster, volunteer with any of these organizations; if you can't volunteer, consider advocating, educating yourself on the needs of the foster care system. And if you can't advocate, then consider donating to Cumberland or any one of the organizations here today. But thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Kate and Dr. Wilson, hello.
Good morning, Judge Es.
Good to see you, my friend.
Good to see you all this morning, and thank you for having us today. I thought I was going from who's who to who's he, but that's not quite the way this is working right now. Currently, I serve as the Chair of the Children's Advocacy Committee of the Children's Advocacy Center. And we just want to thank you for the awareness for child abuse this month and everything that the county does to support all children of Denton County. You see, thirty-one hundred children walked through our doors last year. That's nine a day, who've been victims of the most heinous crimes. And our agencies that we partner with could not do it by themselves. And so we greatly appreciate our partnership, the support of the nonprofits here in our community, and your awareness and ability to really put that up in front of folks to see what goes on in our county. So thank you for what you do. Thank you for your advocacy on our behalf and for every child in our community. And I'm proud to have gone to who's he, to who's he, if I get to do this work. So thank you all.
That's right. Good, good, good. Kate, did you want to say anything? Are you good? All right, who's next? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Joan Park Saunders, and we represent the CPS Board. And first, I'd like to ask everybody who's involved with CPS and all of the workers who are here if they would stand and I want to give them a round of applause for all that they do. And there are many, there are many people who are not here. There are many people who are not here today but who are integral in providing for the children of Denton County. And we want to thank the Commissioners and the county for all of the support that they give to the board and for giving us the honor to serve on the board. And we ask for your continued support, and we ask that the community continue to support our children here in Denton County.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Who else do we have? Thank you for what y'all do. All right. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good.
My name is Rashawn Ivory. I'm a Program Director here in Denton County with Family-Based Safety Services, FBSS. And what we do is, our job is to maintain children's safety in the home. Our work towards getting the children back into the home with their parents. And we do this by offering them services to address whatever issue we became involved with them because of. So just wanted to introduce myself, and I do have staff here as well, and just say thanks for your support and all that you do.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Is that everybody? All right, perfect. Let me read this proclamation real quick. This is a court proclamation recognizing Child Abuse Prevention Month, erase child abuse and neglect, our complex and ongoing problems in our society affecting many children here in Denton County. And whereas in twenty twenty-four, Denton County Child Protective Services received eight thousand one hundred and four reports of child abuse, and of those, five thousand six hundred were assigned to caseworkers. And whereas in twenty twenty-four, Denton County Child Protective Services obtained legal custody of a hundred and ninety-eight new children who were then placed with an appropriate relative or kinship caregiver or in a foster home. And whereas in twenty twenty-four, Denton County Child Protective Services had an average of two hundred and ninety-three children in its protective custody. And whereas every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, nurtured, feel secure, and be free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse and neglect. And whereas it is a responsibility of every adult who comes in contact with a child to protect that child's inalienable right to a safe and nurturing childhood. Whereas Denton County has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child maltreatment and to help parents obtain the assistance they need. And whereas our communities are stronger when all citizens become aware of child maltreatment prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And now therefore be it resolved that the Denton County Commissioners' Court does hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Denton County. And we call upon all citizens, community organizations, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses, including the Denton County Child Protective Services Board, Community Partners of Denton County, the Cumberland Youth and Family Services. The court appointed special advocates, CASA of Denton County, and the Children's Advocacy Center of North Texas to increase their participation in our efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. Done in open court this fifteenth day of April twenty twenty-five, on a motion by the Chair, second by Commissioner Mitchell. I will just say, there's so many people involved in this, the individual employees, the agencies. But really, one of the reasons we talk about this today is we want everyone to be involved, and we want to bring awareness to that, to this issue, and so that people have a top-of-mind mentality to observe ways in which they can identify if there's child abuse, and also look for ways in which they can be supportive on the prevention and treatment thereof. And so we had a great time this morning. I want to just echo what we talked about earlier, which was, thank you for what you do. Thank you for, it's tough work. I think all these people that are involved in this business deserve a daily standing ovation for what they do. And you're creating positivity and helping generational change. I always say it's about generational change. You're helping this generation and then their successors and their children and their families because you're restoring a childhood and positivity in their life as they grow and mature, hopefully productive citizens here in the county. So I want to thank each and every one of you for what you do and for the collaboration that y'all have together. I think these groups work well together, and I'm proud of that. There's a lot of overlap, and as you're working on cases and going through court systems and investigations and everything that it entails in restoration and providing things as simple as a bed and a pillow that we were talking about earlier this morning, a bed and a pillow, and so to some of these kids. And so I just want to thank each and every one of you for the different facets of which you're involved in. I will say that we're going to, we'll be putting on social media and in our newsletters this week, different profiles of the different businesses, I mean, the different agencies here. So if you're watching this, would like to learn more about how you can become involved. We're going to have different profiles of the different agencies. So easy ways for you to click and learn and donate and volunteer and help out the cause, okay? So thank you. Members, anything? Anyone else want to say anything?
Judge, I want to call out two sentences that you said in that proclamation. It is the responsibility of every adult who comes in contact with a child to protect the child's inalienable right to a safe and nurturing childhood. And also, Judge, it says another one. It's our communities are stronger when all citizens become aware of child maltreatment prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. I called out those two sentences because I want to put it on everyone's mind, not only the people that are here, but the people that are online. That is our responsibility as citizens, as adults, to help. Sometimes we think, we see, and we think, let somebody else do it or I'll give somebody else, I'll tell somebody else about it. But it's your responsibility and my responsibility when we see children being mistreated to say something. I want to thank each and every one of you, these groups, for all that you do. It's heartbreaking when you see cases with children that have been abused, or anybody abused, but especially children. I want to thank you again and remind every adult in Denton County to step up and let's help our children. Because when we help our children, we have a better community and a better society. Get up and let's do something. Getting on my soapbox this morning, so I'm gonna start.
Amen. It's okay. All right. Commissioner Edmondson.
Thank you, Judge. I want to use the magic number, one hundred. We've all heard of a hundred all our lives. When we were in school, we hoped to get a hundred on every test. It's one of those things that is a kind of a magic key for Americans and for Texans. And I heard today from one of our agencies that they're looking for one hundred volunteers. And I think it was CASA that used that. I'm gonna put that in my newsletter. I'm gonna encourage the other commissioners to do the same. We can, we're gonna be reaching more than a hundred people. And I want to encourage a hundred of these people that are gonna hear from us right now to think about stepping up and helping where they can. Thank you so much for all you have done. It's unthinkable to me what you all have had to witness. So thank you. We're gonna do what we can to be of even more help. We appreciate you very much.
Yeah, we really appreciate what you do. And I enjoyed the conversations this morning at breakfast. So thank you for all showing up and look forward to helping out any way we can.
All right.
Need one more?
Go right ahead. Yep, please.
Well, no, I just thank you all. I wish that we didn't need your agencies, but because we do, I'm so happy that you all are providing those services. Two of my grandchildren came through the foster system. So I personally understand exactly what you all do and the good that you do. And I thank you each for that.
All right. Here are another comments. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all so much for what you do.
Hey, Brucey.
Yes, thank you.
Brucey. Hi, how are you?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I'm gonna try to get. Where did that come from? I need some more of that.
I forgot about it.
Bunch, yeah.
All right. Bobby, Kevin, do my.
Do you have some of the special juice?
I need some.
We have a.
We have cases of it.
Cases of them.
But you don't have one.
All right, let's go to item three B, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing April thirteenth through the nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, as National Public Safety Telecommunication Week. And I do believe we have the sheriff here and representatives of our telecommunication department. And I'll let the sheriff give any introductory comments. Good morning, sir.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners.
Nice invocation this morning. I love that.
You're probably not gonna hear from these two standing behind me because as it was put to me, do not throw us under the bus, Sheriff. As we came in, it's remarkable who, people who are very calm and telling a child how to do CPR or telling a police officer what to do don't want to speak in front of public, and I get that. And so out of respect for their wishes, I will speak for them because I'm extremely proud of them, of what they do. Behind me have Robin Thomas and Brittany Sparks, our supervisors for our communications, telecommunications in our office. And I can't even begin to explain to you the importance of what they do and how much in the background that they are and often forgotten about when it comes to the job that we have to do. I've been doing this a very long time, and there's an old saying that says, your wife may not know where you're at, your mama may not know where you're at, but your dispatcher better know where you're at.
That's right.
And it's, and it's the truth. And I can tell you over many years of this job, they've been my lifeline on many occasions. And I just want you to think about, you know, you think about the stress every day that police officers go through and law enforcement in general. And when I think about these guys who are on the phone with someone who's in desperate need or someone who is having the worst day of their life, and they're just talking to them on the phone. And, you know, once the police officers get there, they hang up, and then they have to sit there and wonder what's going on and wonder what's happening. They also have to send their friends, these police officers who they know very well, into very dangerous situations. And they have to be the calm in the storm. And to me, that'd be the most stressful thing that a person could go through. And they do it on a day-to-day basis here in Denton County. I could not be more proud of them. And, you know, they're, they're the faces that you don't see very often. But man, you're sure glad to hear that voice. And I've been in those situations where I needed help, and I needed it in a hurry. And they're the ones that sent me that help. And, you know, I thank God for them and the job that they do. And it's a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five day-a-year thing. And if you can imagine being on the phone with a child and their mom is hurt or their dad is hurt, or if you can imagine having to talk someone through CPR on a loved one, that's the stress that these, these folks go through on an everyday basis. And I just want everybody to be aware of that. I want everybody to be thankful for them because I'm so thankful for them. And I know the people who are out there on a daily basis in those patrol cars or kicking in those doors or running towards gunfire are sure happy they're there too because we could not operate the sheriff's office without them. They are one of the backbones of our agency. And I just want to let everyone here and everyone listening know the quality of individuals that you have on the other end of that phone. They do a tremendous job. And they do it under some of the most stressful situations that you can imagine. And I don't brag on them enough. I tell them the other day that I brag about you to other people, but I don't brag to you enough. And that's, that's something that I'm working on that when I'm speaking to groups, I need to remember, I need to go tell them. And so that's one reason I wanted to be here this morning was to reiterate my commitment to them and to just tell them how thankful I am for them and for everything they do. And I won't make you talk, I promise. So before we take a picture in a minute, but.
We have to call them professionally to get them, to have them speak.
Yeah, they are communications officers, but yet, no. It's fine. They are quite content with being the calm in the storm and being the voice behind that. And they never seek recognition. They never seek accolades, but unfortunately, you're getting them today. So I'm thankful for them. And these two ladies behind me do a remarkable job. If you can imagine scheduling and people being sick, people being off and FMLA and different things. And you have to have those consoles manned because people's lives depend on it. And they have very stressful jobs. And thank you for everything you do. And when you get back, please let everybody know. And I will come down myself and let them know here in a little bit. But thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Sheriff. Well put. So this is a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, which is April thirteenth through the nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. The Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the fifteenth day of April, twenty twenty-five, considered the following proclamation. It raises the week of April thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, through April the nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, as a time to show our appreciation and recognize that our health, safety, and well-being often depend on the commitment and steadfast devotion of public safety nine-one-one telecommunications. And whereas the Denton County nine-one-one telecommunications are dedicated professionals ready to answer emergency and life-saving calls to those in twenty-four, in need for twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We know we can rely on the dedication and professionalism of our nine-one-one telecommunications who answer non-emergency and nine-one-one emergency calls for law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services and dispatch the appropriate assistance as quickly as possible. Our nine-one-one telecommunications are often the sole lifeline to police, fire, and EMS out in the field. And whereas in 2024, the Denton County nine-one-one telecommunications answered seventy-seven thousand six hundred and five nine-one-one emergency calls for service and a hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and thirteen non-emergency calls totaling two hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred and eighteen, which does not include the fifty-eight thousand six hundred and nineteen outbound calls or the two hundred and seventy-nine texts to nine-one-one that were processed. Aside from managing the telephone workload, they entered three hundred and ninety-six thousand one hundred and sixty-eight officer-initiated activates, public requests, and twenty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-eight fire EMS-initiated activates, public requests. And whereas our dedicated nine-one-one telecommunications engage in hundreds of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their communication and life-saving skills, are skillful and experienced telecommunications who support emergency response and show devoted commitment every day, serve as a vital link between our residents and public safety providers who save lives, protect property, and apprehend criminals. Whereas first responder refers to a public safety employee whose primary duty is to respond quickly to an emergency. The nine-one-one telecommunications of Denton County have played a vital role in the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. These unseen first responders work tirelessly behind the scenes to ensure emergencies are dealt with efficiently. Every one of these dedicated men and women deserve our heartfelt appreciation. And whereas it is appropriate to set aside a week and recognize the vital and critical role of nine-one-one telecommunications provide in helping to protect life and property. They are unseen heroes of public safety. They are, they are always heard but rarely seen. They are the heroes behind the scenes, the calm voice in the dark. Now therefore be it resolved in recognition of the men and women of the Denton County Sheriff's Office Communications Center whose diligence and professionalism keep our county citizens safe. The Denton County Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, does hereby proclaim the week of April the thirteenth through the nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, as Public Safety Telecommunicator Week here in Denton County. We urge our citizenry to join the commission in commending all telecommunications for dedication to duty, professionalism, and commitment to the preservation of life and property and the prevention of crime. Done in open court this the fifteenth day of April, twenty twenty-five, upon a motion made by.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? Well, I agree with everything in this proclamation. And you are the first step in a long chain of first responders and that first nine-one-one call. What, what a peace of mind our residents have in knowing that all we have to do is dial nine-one-one. And you have a skilled professional training that's trained, that can help you provide, help walk you through a medical emergency. So the individual may be the first responder, right? But it's through y'all's guidance and training that y'all help them to provide that life safety. And you also send help along the way. So it's a great, I can tell you that it's just a great comfort to every one of our residents knowing that, seriously, they're just three numbers away and that y'all are there waiting twenty-four hours a day. And I want to thank y'all for all that you do. Thank you so much.
Go ahead, Judge.
Judge, I just.
Go ahead. No, ladies first.
Age before beauty.
I'll take any and all the above.
Well, I guess I got that one too, don't I?
Yes, you do. You have both age and beauty.
I just want to thank you all again. It's so refreshing. And Judge, just a few months ago, that you personally, the Apple Watch called nine-one-one to help somebody.
That's right.
And with the calm mind, they were able to help this lady. And she's alive today because our nine-one-one people responded. So we want to thank you, telecommunications, for all that you do. And with the calm mind, you know, I can't imagine me on the line, somebody's calling me, I'd be all over the place. But you take time to assess each situation and know what you need to do. And I want to thank you for all that you do because we could not make it without nine-one-one, whether it's a little child that thinks they have a great big problem or an older adult that really do have a problem. Thank you for being that voice to help them to stay calm to someone until someone can get there to help them. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Commissioner Edmondson.
I second everything that Bobby has said. And I personally had the opportunity or the occasion to call nine-one-one several weeks ago because I witnessed a car wreck, and it was busy. They didn't answer. And I thought, what's going on? Well, I found out, they called me back later. They had so many calls from other people that had also witnessed that same wreck that they simply couldn't answer them all. I know that had to be frustrating for the nine-one-one people. So thank you all for staying calm and for calling me back to make sure that I was okay. And it was, it was great. Y'all are, you're invisible, but you're so valuable to all parts of our community. Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Williams.
Yeah, Sheriff, I'm gonna add to a little bit of yours. Obviously, firsthand knowledge is different than most citizens realize. And telecommunications, that's a word I don't ever use, dispatchers. And I don't mean to be disrespectful. I guess cops should be law enforcement professional. Maybe that's, our names should get a lot more professional sounding. But at the end of the day, it doesn't matter what our names are. You know, when, when things are going south, it's nice to have somebody that you can contact to help you out and send the rest of the cavalry. Because a lot of times what people don't realize is you maybe not have a chance to get to your radio to ask for help. And, and. Because a lot of times what people don't realize is you maybe not have a chance to get to your radio to ask for help and, and they do periodic checks to check on you. And believe me, there's been a couple of times where I was very happy to hear that check because when I didn't respond, that meant they were going to send other officers. And so, um, you know, it's, it, the relationship you build with your, uh, telecommunications um, is, is a, uh, a special one. You know, as the sheriff said, you have your family, you know, you have your wife. And this is basically like your second wife or husband or whatever you want to call it at work. Because without them, uh, uh, you really kind of, you're out there on an island on your own. And, um, I just want to say thank you to all the ones that have, have not only do the job today, but have helped me in so many ways that allowed me to be here today because of the, the assistance that they were able to provide. And, uh, when, when things, when your emotions are heightened, uh, yeah, dispatchers and, and law enforcement officers generally can take care of that and the regular citizens aren't accustomed to it. So to teach you or talk you through what to do, how to handle a situation is, is exceptional. And, uh, that's not, you know, you're, you're taught things, but it's hard to teach someone how to control their, their environment and to control their, uh, their attitude and, and how they're handling a situation. And, and I would say we, uh, Denton County have, have some wonderful dispatchers or, I'm sorry, telecommunications.
There's still dispatchers to me.
I really appreciate what you guys do. And ladies, I know how difficult it is because it's a hard position to, to get great employees in. And we're always fighting to keep them because every, uh, city or other counties are always trying to pull away. And I, I can understand that. I've worked with people that left Denton County and they were wonderful and we hated to lose them, obviously. But at the end of the day, that's part of this career choice that, uh, is, uh, I don't know if it's made, it's not a choice you really make very easy because you have to be called to it because it's, it's tough. You know, you're in a dark environment most of the time. Here, we're kind of in a dungeon, which by the way, we're working hard to change that.
Haven't forgotten.
Yeah, we haven't forgot about you. It may seem like, but we have not. But, uh, you know, your work environment's not the most pleasant always. So thank you again for everything you do. I really appreciate it.
Judge?
Yes, go ahead, ahead.
Oh, just, I, I also want to thank you all. You are, you're truly the first first responders and so important. And, uh, we, we thank you so much for you and we haven't forgotten about you.
And it's for so many agencies across the county, you know, I mean, large and small that we, we, that we dispatch for. So anyway, hearing other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all so much for being here. Okay, one, one more proclamation real quick. This is, we're excited to have our friends from AgriLife with us. If y'all want to come down for item three C, this is approval of a proclamation recognized in April twenty-first through the twenty-fifth as every kid healthy week and any appropriate action. This is with our, this is, um, hosted by our Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension. Go ahead, Candy. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I would like to begin by expressing my heartfelt gratitude to the commissioners and Judge Esfuer allowing us this opportunity to present and sign the proclamation for every kid healthy week. Your support is truly appreciated and deeply meaningful. Every kid healthy week recognized on the calendar of national health observances and observed during the last full week of April each year. And this year from April twenty-first through the twenty-fifth shines a spotlight on the important efforts schools and families are making to improve the health and wellness of our children. Each day of the week highlights a specific area of well-being focusing on the vital connection between nutrition, fiscal activity, mental health and academic success. Simply put, healthy kids are better prepared to learn and thrive. We're excited to encourage families to participate in a series of scheduled family-friendly activities designed to make healthy living both fun and engaging. I would also like to take a moment to extend my heartfelt thanks to the incredible community partners who are helping bring this week to life today. So we have our partners, partners today with here. We are honored to have with us today Ms. Dora Garcia and Ms. Celeb, Celebrilla Walcourt from Cook Children's Center for Community Health. Thanks to their generosity, we will be distributing one-fifty wellness bags filled with games and activities to support children's physical, social and mental well-being at various community events throughout the week. We are also grateful to Ms. Cynthia Elliott from Northwest ISD's Parents' Teachers Program who has partnered with us to promote this initiative to more than thousand families enrolled in their programs. The Women, Infants and Children Program, the Department of Family and Protective Services, Little M ISD's Parent Academy will all be sharing these valuable resources with families throughout the community to ensure that the message of health, wellness and support reaches as many homes as possible. Together, we are building stronger, healthier futures for every child. Thank you once again for your time, your support and your commitment to the well-being of the children in our community. I'll hand over to the mic, the mic to Ms. Dora Garcia from Cook Children's.
Okay, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning and thank you for having us here and thank you for recognizing every kid healthy week. Um, it is our honor to be able to partner with, uh, our AgriLife agents here in Denton. Uh, they're a wonderful resource. They work tirelessly all year round to promote healthy, uh, habits and healthy initiatives, uh, with all the children in Denton County. Uh, as, um, they align, um, all of their work aligns with the work that, uh, we do in the community as well. And, um, we also love the opportunity to be a present, um, with everybody here to be able, uh, to recognize that we all want healthy children. Um, I recommend that, um, everybody partake in every kid healthy week um, by visiting howdyhealth.org. And there you will find resources that have been, uh, put together by AgriLife that encourage families, uh, to partake in healthy lifestyle, uh, like family night, game night, um, Healthy Wednesday, um, Wellness Wednesday, um, you know, um, Mindful Monday and, um, really great opportunities to, uh, practice healthy lifestyles together.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else we need to hear from? Okay. Are we good? All right. This is a court proclamation recognizing every kid healthy week, April twenty-first through the twenty-fifth. Whereas every kid healthy week is an annual observance created in twenty thirteen to celebrate school health and wellness achievements and encourages schools and families to focus on promoting healthy habits, good nutrition, emotional health and physical activity. It is very important to keep family members and students healthy during this time, which includes all health. Whereas there is a need for continuing education and a wide-scale effort to enhance healthy practice. So, so that healthy kids are better prepared to learn and thrive. Whereas Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension and Cook's Children's Center for Community Health, through their unique partnership and prevention-based approaches to serving children are effectively addressing the healthy lifestyle needs of children, youth and families in our community. And now therefore be resolved that Denton County Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, does hereby recognize the week of April the twenty-first to the twenty-fifth as every kid health, healthy week in Denton County and encourage all citizens to join the campaign and encourage families to continue this week with schedules, activities to complete and have fun while safely promoting overall health for everyone done in open court this fifteenth day of April, twenty twenty five upon a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all for being here, what you do. All right. We're going to skip around. We have lots of guests with us today. So we'll try to get these cleared out. Let's go ahead and do item ten A, approval of the preliminary plat for enclave of Taper Ranch, which includes the requirement of an approved fire protection plan. And the following variance request, one, the minimum lot size is forty-eight hundred square feet. Two, the minimum lot width measurement along the building line is forty feet. Number three, minimum front building setback shall be twenty feet. Number four, the local streets shall be a minimum of fifty-foot right-of-way and thirty-one-foot wide concrete pavement measured from back of curb to back of curb. Collective street shall have a minimum of ninety feet wide right-of-way with two lanes of traffic each direction equated to twenty-five feet wide concrete pavement measured from back of curb to back of curb measured on each direction. And five utilities are permissible within the right-of-ways with sanitary sewer and drainage and storm drainage should be located under the pavement castings, not required for street crossings. And six preliminary engineering plans will be reviewed with preliminary plat in lieu of full engineering plans. Look, this is located in Commissioner Precinct Four.
Judge, I proudly move approval of this.
We have a motion for.
Second.
Approved by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's proceed to fourteen C, consideration of a resolution by the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, authorizing the creation of Village Estates Public Improvement District located in Denton County, Commissioner Precinct Four. In accordance with chapter three, seven, two, of the Texas Local Government Code and any appropriate action.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item fourteen D, approval of a Village Estates Public Improvement District financing agreement between Crumb Development, a series of EIS Development Two, LLC, a Texas limited liability company in Denton County, Texas, located in Denton County, Commissioner Precinct Four.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to fourteen H, which is approval of the first renewal and extension of the contract for the collection of delinquent property tax and delinquent court fines between McCary, Basilica, Bragg and Allen PCM VBA in Saco and Burrows, PC, as requested by the Denton County, Texas, as a collector to chair move for approval.
Back up.
Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Let's, let me see what else I have circled here. Fourteen N? Yep. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he was coming to the podium.
Okay. Okay. Thank y'all for being here. All right. Next is fourteen N, and we've revised the language here slightly. Fourteen N is the approval of amendment two to the agreement for architectural services between owner and architect for the Denton County Courts Building Expansion and Site Plan RFSQ two-three-two-seven-six-three between Helmoth, Obata and Casabomb Incorporated, HOK, in Denton County, Texas, which amendment two adds scope three design, bidding and construction administration services for the building located at three thousand and one Colorado Boulevard in Denton, Texas, to the agreement in the not-to-exceed amount of three million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars plus reimbursable expenses not to exceed twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which amount increases the total cost for all scopes, one, two and three services under the agreement from NTE four hundred and fifty-seven, nine hundred and fifty dollars to NTE four million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Scope one is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars plus scope two is a hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars plus scope three is three million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars with total reimbursable expenses not to exceed thirty-three thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. This is eight hundred and seven, eight thousand and seven dollars for scopes one and two and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seven for scope three. With funding to be transferred from the twenty-twenty tax notes Denton County Courts Building, this is eight-four-seven-five-six-zero-nine-zero-one-zero to tax note Civil Courts Building, eight-four-seven-six-eight-five-nine-zero-one-zero, as requested by the Denton County, as requested by Denton County Commissioner Precinct Two, any appropriate action.
Judge, move approval. I think we got a couple of comments.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Proceed, sir.
Thank you, Judge. So, um, as you know, this is our, um, amendment, uh, so that we can proceed with the design and construction documents uh, for the, uh, Civil Courts Building, what we currently call the Sally Corporate Office Building and the remodel of that to a Civil Courts Building. We're very excited to, uh, get this moving along. This is, uh, we actually have, um, our Kurt Pardee is our partner in charge of this from HOK and Kurt is here. Um, Kurt, I don't know if you'd like to come up or at least wave, um, but, um, we, uh, we have, um, obviously been working on through this whole process for quite some time now and uh, HOK has been a partner in that and they clearly are the most highly qualified firm for this particular project and we're really happy to have them. Kurt, I don't know if you have anything, but we're glad you're here.
Commissioner, I don't have a lot to say. I just want to thank you all for, uh, allowing us to be a part of your team to design this, this building for you. We've been working with you on the, on the building previously and developing a facility analysis and done, uh, really worked with your staff to figure out what needs to go in this building and what will work best. So, uh, and we're all ready to move forward.
We don't have the pretty pictures yet, but we have in the contract that Kurt will be back with pretty pictures at every one of our stages. So, uh, the, always pretty pictures from architects. So, um, but we're, we're excited to move this along.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, it's good to see you again. So thank you. Thank you for what you're doing. We're excited to get this project, uh, well on its way. And I believe ultimately this will be a, a significant cost savings to the Denton County taxpayer. That's what this is. Just reprogramming this building that we bought. So I think it'll be a great project. Any other comments? All right. All, we have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks for being here this morning.
Thank you, sir.
Excited to get that one done. All right, let me look here. All right, let's go back to item two, which is our consent agenda. Members, are there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda to have a motion for approval as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously to our consent agenda that considers of approval of order-making appointments and any appropriate action. Item two B is approval of budgetman request one zero zero eight five zero for the Criminal District Attorney to transfer one, one thousand dollars from evidence expense to county promotion to, for additional funding for employee engagement event items. Item two C is approval of budgetman request one zero zero eight six zero for purchasing to transfer one thousand eleven dollars from technology software services to county promotion to provide additional funding for employee engagement event items. And item two D is approval of the March twenty twenty-five road superintendent report as presented for recording purposes only. Let's go to item four A, which is a public hearing for approval of the replat of Monarch at the Meadows. This is lot sixteen, our block B. This is point two-two-five acres located in Commissioner Precinct Four. Do we have a motion to open a public hearing? Motion?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the mon- or opposed to the Monarch at Meadows replat? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor or opposed to the Monarch at Meadows replat? Hearing underway, have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion for the replat?
Judge, I move to accept the replat. I was just out by there yesterday then, it's really coming along nicely, so, I'm happy to move to accept that.
Perfect, we have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item five A, approval of bill report payments from CSCD Community Corrections, TIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Fortress, VIT, Interest, and DA Fortress Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge, I have no chance today to recommend approval as presented.
All right, do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I was looking for Frank's item. Frank, what's your item? Or are you here, was he here? Which one was he? What?
B.
Six B?
Ballot Scout.
Got him almost there, okay, I was gonna get him out. Let's go and do six A, approval to declare miscellaneous vehicles as a, and a container as surplus advertising placed in online auction, two-five-two-eight-five-seven to be held from April the twenty-first through twenty-twenty-five through May the second, twenty-twenty-five.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, now Frank, this, item six B, approval of exemption from bidding for the sole source purchase of ballot scout, enhanced ballot, and two, enhanced remake stations from enhanced voting LLC in amount of seventy-nine thousand dollars. We have Frank Phillips, our elections administrator here, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioner, so, this is some new software, and I don't get excited about a lot of things, especially software, but this one I really like, so...
All right, good.
It does three things for us. The first one is a module that is for overseas military and overseas voters, so, when they request a ballot, we can email them a ballot in a PDF form, or if they're in a conflict zone, they can receive that ballot by email. The problem we run into, especially with the overseas PDF ballots, is that whoever is in charge of their IT and their mail delivery service, a lot of them will not allow attachments. So they have huge difficulties in printing their ballot and getting it back to us. What this does is it allows us to send them a link, they can click on that link, complete their ballot within the program, print it off, and send it back to us, either by mail or by email depending on their eligibility. So, that's the first one. The second one is for mail ballot voters domestically who can track their mail ballot. So, I know there's a mail ballot tracker now on the Secretary of State site, but it's a little, it's not misleading, it's just not a tracker like we think of when we track our mail or UPS item or something like that. The state's ballot tracker tells them a couple of things, that we receive their requests, that we mail them a ballot. That's basically it. They can't track the process of it. What this allows us to do is to use USPS barcodes to allow the voter to not only track their ballot, but they can sign up for notifications. It's, it's in our office, we mailed it today, they can track it just like they can track their mail. And if they have informed delivery from USPS, they'll also get emails from them about it. The third one may be a little more boring, it's a, it's a remake tool that we use for, we will use for damaged ballots or ballots that we have to remark, like the PDF ballot. Currently, we remark those by hand, this will allow the early voting ballot board members to do it electronically and create a chain of custody trail with the original ballot and the new ballot. It's really for auditing purposes, so.
Thank you, sir, for the explanation.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion?
I just, comments, I, I think these are great, just like last one, that, we already have a great election system here in Denton County, but we're not stopping and we're improving, and especially for our, our, our men and women serving overseas and that kind of thing, that, this is gonna be a big help, and I'm glad.
It'll be great for them, it'll resolve a lot of issues.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'm gonna hold item six C, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold that one for one week. Let's go to item six D, approval to contract with Prime Source Construction Incorporated for the roof replacement of the Denton County Courts Building in amount of three-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-six dollars through the Texas Interlocal Purchasing System Tips Cooperative Contract two-three-zero-one-zero-four-zero-two, and any appropriate action?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six E, approval to contract with Prime Source Construction Incorporated for the installation of a new roof, roofing system on the Denton County Culture Building in amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-forty-six dollars through the Texas Interlocal Purchasing System Tips Cooperative Contract two-three-zero-one-zero-four-zero-two, and any appropriate action? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six F, approval of contract with Gomez Floor Covering Incorporated for the purchase and installation of new carpet flooring at the Frisco Government Center in amount of ninety-two-thousand-seven-hundred-fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents through by-board cooperative contracts two-three-six-dash-two-four, and any appropriate action?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, I believe there was, the code was, the seven-three-six-dash-two-four?
Seven-three-six-dash-two-four.
Yes, sir, for the record.
Okay, thank you. Let the record reflect that it is by-board cooperative contract seven-three-six-two-four. We have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Bianca. Next is item seven A, report for miscellaneous equipment and software services presented for recording purposes only. Next is item seven B, approval of budgetman request one-zero-zero-eight-seven-zero for the county jail to transfer four-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-six-hundred-fifty-nine dollars from unappropriated contingency to various salary benefit line items to cover the cost of budgeting for twenty full-time detention. Officer one positions grade one-oh-four for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven C, approval of budgetman request one-zero-zero-eight-eight-zero for Constable Precinct Six to transfer fifty-thousand-six-hundred-thirty-four dollars to the County Vehicles Department to cover the cost of the pool vehicle purchased from County Vehicles and assign to Constable Precinct Six in place of the original vehicle purchase.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item eight A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials as presented for recording purposes only. Gustavo.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one promotion in the county clerk, one new hire in adult probation, one demotion in the district attorney's office, three new hires in the district clerk, three new hires in UNL probation, one new hire in the sheriff's office, that is the detention office of one, and two promotions in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Perfect, good, thank you. Let's proceed to nine A, authorization of a letter of, approval of a letter of authorization between Denton County Public Health and TeleTask Incorporated for third-party message routing services. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve A, approval of the US Army Corp Engineers Agreement with Denton County and the, for the twenty-twenty-five summer patrol services at Lake Lewisville.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll do thirteen A in, after executive session. Fourteen A is approval of change order number one to the contract agreement for the construction services between Denton County, Texas and Two L Construction LLC for the Rippey, Rippey Road Culver Project south of Reek Road. Due to additional construction efforts required for the project, change order number one will increase the contract in amount of twenty thousand dollars for a revised contract amount of one-million-two-hundred-ninety-six-thousand-two-hundred-ninety-six dollars with funding in amount of twenty thousand dollars to come from unincorporated road improvements, countywide trip twenty-two auto line item eight-nine-seven-five-eight-zero-nine-zero-seven-zero, and any appropriate action? Our chair will second it. Commissioner Edmondson made the motion, chair second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Been a work for a long time. It takes a while.
Takes a bit.
Good efforts paying off. Fourteen B is approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and Ponder Farmers Municipal Utility District of Denton County, Texas, the District for Fire Protection Emergency Ambulance Services, the ICA.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen E, approval of agreement for construction of electrical and generator upgrades, phase one CSP two-four-two-eight-three-one between Denton County, Texas and Real Construction Group LLC in amount of seven-million-eighteen-thousand-six-hundred-seventy-nine dollars, which, which amount is inclusive of the contingency allowance, amount of four-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-six-hundred-fifty dollars with funding to come from facilities line item six-six-seven-six-five-four-nine-zero-five-zero, this is the twenty-twelve PI Bond Fund Phase One Electrical and Generator as recommended by the Denton County Purchasing Director. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, go to fourteen F, approval of updated additional information form for self-funded accounts, which form is attached to the Claim Administrator Business Associate Agreement by and between Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Texas, a division of
Bless you.
Healthcare Service Corporation, a mutual legal reserve company, claim administrator, and Denton County, Texas Public Employee Benefit Cooperative for Texas, the employer and the employer on behalf of its group health plan, GHP, and any appropriate action as requested by the Denton County Human Resources after recommendation of the PEBC, the chair will move for approval.
Bless you.
Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I do want to thank our Denton County Human Resources for all their efforts on the transition to Blue Cross Blue Shield this year, and I want to thank our employees for their patience and, and grace as we've gone through that conversion, and again, thank you to our Denton County HR department for their diligence and customer service mentality. Next is fourteen G, approval of twenty-twenty-five interlocal agreement for professional services between the counties of Tarrant, Dallas, Denton, Parker, and North Texas Tollway Authority, the NTTA, as members of the Public Employee Benefit Cooperative of North Texas, the PEBC, and the North Central Council of Governments, with Denton County agreeing to pay the sum of two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-two dollars with funding to come from the employee benefit plan, and any appropriate action?
Move, move to, second.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. All right, next is fourteen I, approval of amendment number one to the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the city of Louisville, Texas for the corporate drive project from Waters Ridge Drive to east of the Elm Fork Trinity River Bridge, with Denton County agreeing to increase its contribution towards satisfactory completion of the project from one-million-four-hundred-fifty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-thirty-four dollars to an amount which shall not exceed seven-million-four-hundred-fifty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-thirty-four dollars with funding amount, additional amount of six million dollars to come from the corporate drive precinct three, trip twenty-two auto line item nine-two-seven-four-one-nine-nine-zero-four-zero, and any appropriate action? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen J, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the city of Aubrey, Texas for the Frontier Parkway project to provide for the reconstruction of Frontier Parkway as a four-lane undivided roadway with FM thirteen-eighty-five and Arlo Way, with Denton County agreeing to contribute nine-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars towards satisfactory completion of the project with funding to come from the county unincorporated roadway improvements, trip twenty-two auto line item eight-nine-seven-five-eight-zero-nine-zero-seven-zero, and to be transferred to Frontier Parkway Precinct One Auto Line Item eight-nine-seven-six-eight-six-nine-zero-two-zero, and any appropriate action?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item fourteen K, acceptance of a donation of a temporary construction easement from Mark Lloyd to Denton County, Texas for the Plainview Road project consisting of a zero-point-one-five-three acre, this is six-hundred, six-thousand-six-hundred-fifty-three square feet tract of land in Andrew J Bernard Survey Abstract Number seventy-five, Denton County, Texas, any appropriate action? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, I do want to thank Mr. Lloyd for the donation of the temporary construction easement.
Yeah, absolutely, we appreciate that.
We don't always get those anymore. I, I used to get them all the time. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That's good work. Next is fourteen L, approval of the purchase of a drain easement by Denton County, Texas from Janet Mars Trustee of the Fred C Mars and Janet C Mars Revocable Living Trust, and from Max B Mars Trustee of the Max B Mars and Marilyn G Mars Revocable Trust, in amount of seven-hundred dollars, plus closing costs for the purchase of a drain easement consisting of a zero-point-zero-four-six acre, this is two-thousand square feet tract of land situated in Andrew J Bernard Survey Abstract Number seventy-five, Denton County, Texas for the Plainview Road Improvement Project which serves as a public, which serves a public purpose with funding to come from the Plainview Road Precinct Four Auto Line Item eight-nine-seven-five-five-five-eight-nine-zero-five-zero, and any appropriate action?
I move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This is another one that's been a long time in the making. Next is fourteen M, approval supplemental agreement number one to professional services agreement between Denton County, Texas and Westwood Professional Services Incorporated for the State Highway one-fourteen Championship Parkway Traffic Signal Project to increase the scope of the project to include additional services for work related to the turn lane design for both northbound Championship Parkway and eastbound State Highway one-fourteen at Championship Parkway in the additional amount of eighty-four-thousand-five-hundred-fifty-five dollars for a total revised contract amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-five-hundred-fifty-five dollars with funding to come from the judge discretionary trip twenty-two auto line item nine-three-seven-four-three-seven-nine-zero-six-zero, and be transferred to State Highway one-fourteen Championship Judge Auditor Line Item nine-three-seven-five-nine-two-nine-zero-six-zero, and any appropriate action?
I move approval, and thank you, Judge.
Second, motion by Commissioner Edmondson, seconded by the chair, any discussion?
Yeah, Judge, I've got something I would like to mention, I don't think that, if you don't mind, sir.
Oh, please, sir.
I'm not sure the citizens probably understand, you know, when we talk about all these things and you hear these big numbers and you see a lot of these are state highways and farm-to-market, which is, is the state's job to actually build and maintain these, these highways, but the, the county is very proactive, and we use our bond money and tax dollars to get these projects set up way in advance, because if we waited on the state, which, nothing against the state, the state has a, a large amount of, of roadway that they're responsible for, and so, if we sat back and let them do it as time comes, a lot of these roads would never get this, this type of attention, and so I think it's imperative that our citizens realize that when, when the state or representatives or anybody chant about how they've been able to do X, Y, Z for certain roads, that they, that they remember the reason they were started was because of this Commissioners Court and the citizens that gave us bond money to get a lot of these roads started. So I think it's extremely imperative that they realize that that's where it starts. It may finish with the state, but it starts with this county. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, and I've been working on Highway one-fourteen for eighteen years.
There you go.
Commissioner Edmondson's been working on it ever since she's been in office, and as he's, not only do we, it's a great point, Commissioner, thank you for making it. Not only do we make the, you've been driving it for a long time?
Been driving it for my whole.
But not only do we make the, the actual, so many times do the engineering and right-of-way acquisition, but we also come back in after roads are, are completed and do signal light installations and other improvements to the project as well.
Judge.
Yes.
Could I also point out the importance of the Commissioners working together
Yep.
On this, because here was a project in my precinct, and we ended up with the muster. On this, because here was a project in my precinct and we ended up with the money to finish it from the judge's discretion.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You bet, absolutely.
Well, and I don't want to take away that our state partners aren't good partners, because they are good partners, but at the end of the day, I want to make sure everybody realizes a lot of this stuff doesn't start without the county.
It's a, it's a spirit of transparency.
Yes sir, that's exactly right. Thank you Judge, appreciate it.
You bet. All right, did I get the agenda done? What are we lacking besides executive session?
We wanted to come back on.
Did we vote on that?
Oh.
We gotta vote on that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's go to, let me see, I don't have an addendum, let's go to item seventeen, which is committee updates, we'll start with Commissioner Precinct one, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you Judge, something that was kind of, I would say exciting in one sense and probably scary in another, I want to thank our Texas Gain Warden that rescued ten students from Lake Ray Roberts. Texas Gain Warden responded to a nine-one-one call out for ten UNT students that were blown off course at Lake Ray Roberts during the wind conditions. I think something's very important for people to realize that the wind conditions can come up on you and sneak up on you. Lake Ray Roberts is a very open lake and can be quite dangerous when the winds pick up. Obviously, these young students weren't aware of that, it came up and nine-one-one was dispatched, it was also a cooperative effort between Cook County and Denton Counties to get the help to locate the students, but there was also a, a, a great citizen that helped out in this as well. Neither the Gain Warden's name or the citizen's name is on here, but I think it's important to realize how, how dangerous these lakes can get with the winds that we have sometimes and, and out of the ten, all of them were obviously safely rescued, nine of them were released on scene and one was transported for hypothermia, but at the, at the end of the day, everybody was safe, so just something to be thankful of and also to be thoughtful of when going on our lakes with this wonderful weather we're having.
Perfect, good, thank you.
Thank you Judge.
Commissioner Falconer?
Thank you Judge, I just have a couple of things, well first of all, lots of things happening in general on this holy week leading up to Easter this coming Sunday and want to encourage everyone to participate in those, but I've got a couple of things in Carrollton, the Carrollton Metris services are hosting a job fair on the fourteenth from three to five at the Josie Ranch Lake Library and speaking of the Carrollton Library, they received the twenty twenty-four Achievement of Library Excellence Award from Texas Municipal Library Directors Association, so congratulations to them, they are in the top nineteen percent of all public libraries.
Perfect, great, thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
On April twenty-third, the Lake City's Mayor's Power Breakfast is going to be at the Alana Design Center. On April eighteenth, Lakeside Music Series in Flower Mound, the other one's going to be in Hickory Creek. Lake Dallas Teen Volunteer Info Session, a community discussion for volunteer opportunities for teens during the summer reading program. April nineteenth in Louisville, Service Saturday Volunteer Event, tree planting, if you want to plant some trees, help plant some trees. And on Saturday, April nineteenth, also in Louisville, it's going to be Louisville Lake Environmental Learning, Explore Frontier Life at the Mana Port Log House and Sunset and check the internet for all the Easter activities that's going around in the community, there's a lot of them, too many of them for us to tell you about, but you can go in on the internet and see where you'd like to be doing these activities, thank you.
That's right.
Good, thank you Commissioner Edmondson.
There's a roundup of activities here in Precinct four as well, we have a teen twilight egg hunt in Denton, it's for glow-in-the-dark eggs and I hope those are plastic eggs and not hard-boiled eggs, because if they glow in the dark and they're hard-boiled, I don't think you should eat them. At any rate, that is an unusual thing that we're having there and in Lantana, they're going to have the Bubble Dash, which has teams and benefits the Journey to Dream Foundation. As we're doing these Easter egg hunts and things related to Easter eggs, let's not forget what the real meaning of Easter is, because it's not the Easter Bunny, it's the resurrection of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Lantana Earth Day is in Lantana on April nineteenth and they'll have hazardous waste disposal, document shredding, et cetera, so that's it Judge, thank you.
Perfect, thank you very much. All right, let's go to executive session, we have a couple of items here. Fifteen A is Texas Government Code five-five-one-zero-seven-two, deliberation regarding real property closing to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property, deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body and negotiates with a third person. In fifteen B, Texas Government Code five-five-one-zero-seven-four-five-eight-one, personal matters affecting the county advisory body in closed meeting deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline dismissal of a member of an advisory body to wit the upper Trinity Regional Water District Board of Directors and any appropriate action. And that is all for our executive session and it is ten-thirty-four and we're in executive session, thank you.